All right, it is 1:30 and we are here for a workshop with planning. I want to give a suggestion, what if we go, so are you wanting to go through where we left off? We gave planning department a copy of your book, or, sorry. We're in the middle of an insurance discussion, which is kicking my butt right now. Do you want to go over where we left off, or do you want to go top to bottom of the word document? Is Alan going to come online?
I don't see him, if he jumps on, I'll let you know.
Okay, because I know he was interested in that, so do you want to pick up where we left off then? Just with going over what you presented?
I think if you guys are both okay with it, it might be good just to go over the written comments that Alan and Matt and Dave provided. So if it's most efficient, since Alan's not on at the moment, and then Matt and Dave can decide. I have, I have all their comments kind of broken into categories or broken into thoughts in front of me. So I can read the comments and then offer my feedback on those and we can have a discussion about them. If that makes sense for everyone for efficiency.
Yep.
Matt, are you comfortable with that approach? Then he can just jump in. And Dave, are you comfortable if I read the different thoughts that you offer? Comments that you offered and my feedback on that, so we can have a discussion?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. And I tried to just, obviously, kind of remove the pieces that weren't the focus thought, just so we could stay efficient. So starting with Alan's comments that came in first. He indicated that, when he says we, of course, he's speaking for the planning commission, "We eliminated the matrix because of a concern that the public would focus on the abbreviated uses in density in lieu of relying on the actual zoning code and the more specific requirements and criteria set forth in that code." So this is that discussion about the use of a matrix or a table within the comprehensive plan. And the, so from my perspective, the table offers the same level of detail as the paragraph descriptions, in essence. I know that there's a piece there that I added that we can talk about, that was proposed by the planning commission. So I'm not sure, just in general, how using a table format, we have to look at the details, but using a table format versus a paragraph, I'm not sure why that in and of itself would offer a concern. Obviously, the comprehensive plan and the zoning code are separate and distinct documents and they serve different purposes. The use of a table or the lack of a use of a table doesn't change the potential for the public to have a misperception and misunderstanding about how to use the two documents. I mean, that's just an ongoing struggle, I think, because most people are not familiar with how and why they're different. And so I think that we're going to have an ongoing public training item, regardless of what format we use to convey the information. So I think just at a high level, the details of what's in a table, should we use a table, are important and we need to go through that, you know, and make sure that they make sense. But I don't believe the use of a table in general is problematic, which is kind of what I was interpreting Alan's feedback to be. So I know he's not on, but I'm just, I don't want to dismiss the use of a table just because there was some feedback previously where people found, created some confusion.
Don Davis. When we started looking at the land use component, it quickly came down to the matrix that was there. There's the descriptions written out on the matrix. And the matrix very much truncated what was in the total language. Beyond that, the, even though that was done in 2005, the zoning code then had further characteristics or descriptions of each zone. And trying to see that they were compatible, or if not identical, there was always seemed to be some rub, looking at the hearings that were held for a zone change mainly. And somebody say, "Well, it says over here, it says this, it says over here, it says this." They were not compatible. And then, in the days when the planning and zoning commission was together and we held hearings on zone changes, and people would go back to the matrix in the comp plan to look at it. These planning and zoning commission would say, "Well, look at the text, it says different." But well, the table, you know. So that's, that's the whole trip behind that.
Gotcha.
So we kind of shied away from trying to emphasize or work up a better matrix. And said, "Well, just put it concisely in the language and leave it at that. Take from that, and then in the zoning code, tighten it down." Because then you can look at each one and specifically say what it is and make sure that it really reflects what's in the comp plan.
And that makes sense to me, and I think, and I know we're going to have some overlap here with the different comments, but I think it's valuable to focus on that for a minute. I think that's good history. And from my perspective, we do still have to answer the question, what level of detail should or shouldn't be in the comp plan? And that's obviously a very important question to answer. But with the exception of the new category that I included in my proposal that's been questioned, and I think, you know, reasonably questioned, the uses category, with that exception, the rest of the data in the table is essentially just a reorganization of the paragraph information. So I think we can avoid the concern of what was created previously, where we tried to create two different levels of information in two different formats, because then there can be discrepancies and contradictions. Oh, I see Alan's on now. So Alan can speak directly.
When I, when I looked at what, when I looked at what Commissioner Donkey put forward in the table and then the paragraphs, and then looking at what everybody commented on, I looked to see, was there disagreement between the paragraph and what was in the table? Because I think that that really was the crux of what Alan's comment was. And not accounting for the one issue where there's a need for discussion, I didn't see disagreement between the two. And so I do see that sometimes there's value in what you could call that quick reference guide versus reading through paragraphs. So I could see the value of it. I think that, for me, when I read how it was written and what the paragraph said, I was looking for, is there a potential for an inconsistency in the meaning or the interpretation of the more wordy version that is in the sentence versus the table? And I couldn't find that example when I looked at the two. And I, and that's kind of what I thought Alan's comment was kind of getting at, was if there's a quick reference that is shortened, that changes the meaning, and then there's a conflict between the table and the paragraph. And I didn't see that in what he presented. Alan?
I'm sorry, I had a little trouble getting on. Well, the uses certainly, certainly conflicts with the use tables. And if you're going to have uses on there, I think Commissioner Donkey's already said that maybe that should be removed. I believe very strongly that it should be. But, you know, there, at least in the suburban category, he actually had some language in there that tried to tell, tried to at least, in my opinion, discuss what the zoning was, which I think one acre or something like that. Well, that's just not right. And that illustrates the problem. When you try to get into, you know, what the zoning densities were, especially for suburban and mostly suburban, some of the other ones that have multiple different densities depending on services, you know, you can't, unless you put the whole code section in there, I mean, it's not going to be accurate. Like, for instance, suburban has residential densities greater than one, single-family dwelling for five acres, blah, blah, blah. Well, I don't know what that, you know, if that's meaning that the residential densities are, you know, I'm not sure what it, what it means. I don't know what the five acres is. So for instance, suburban, actually, the maximum, or the density goes from two and a half acres to 10,000 square feet depending on services. So, you know, to me, if you try to get into what the code sets forth as a density in a, in an abbreviated table like this, it's going to be a problem. And you need, we had this, we had this really in spades in, when, we had a, in the matrix that, you know, we decided not to use, recreation, we had in there four, four per acre depending on services. Well, everybody read that and said, "Oh, my God, you can have four dwelling units per acre in, in recreation." Well, no, you can't do that unless you have urban water, urban sewer, and so on and so forth. And you, you just can't do that. So with urban, urban sewer, the maximum density was 20,000 square feet, which is basically a half acre. So we got into that issue and that, we had that comment all the time when we had that matrix out there. And it was just, you know, it just caused confusion. That's why, one of the reasons we decided to get rid of it. So if you're going to use a matrix, I would strongly suggest that you don't have any density language in there other than to say that the density is set forth in Title 12, Section 412. Because that's where it is for suburban and recreation. So, you know, if you, if you do any more than that, it's just going to be a problem. You know, I had some other comments, which I'm sure you'll probably get to, but those were, those were the basic ones. You just don't want to create a conflict between the actual code and this, this, the comp plan matrix, or whatever we're going to call this. So that's my input, you know, for what it's worth.
Alan Wood, so if you were to give a recommendation, and it sounds like if you're going to use the matrix or the quick reference tool, that your recommendation is that where density is referenced, that you just use that section to reference to go to the code versus saying it in the table itself?
Yes.
Is there another issue in what you saw that you would want something or give a recommendation like that, something other than just density?
Well, the uses. But I think Commissioner Donkey has already stated that maybe that shouldn't be in there. You can't, you can't put a bunch of uses in there unless you basically go through the use table, which is very extensive, as you know. And, you know, you're going to leave out things, or you're not going to put things in there that are conditionally permitted or permitted. I mean, you just got to leave it to the use tables to describe what the uses are in each zone and each land use designation area. At least, that's, that's my view. You know, there are some other comments I had, you know, but I'm sure you're going to get to that regarding the buffering issue and also some of the, some of the zones that were included or not included in these various land use designations.
Okay.
Yes, I agree that removing the uses probably makes the most sense so that we don't intentionally conflict or limit what ultimately the use tables are going to be. I think, however, it's going to be really incumbent upon us to make sure that the characteristics are very thoughtfully worded to encompass enough detail that we don't have a cart before the horse issue. Because what I hear a lot, and I want to make sure it doesn't happen, is we keep referencing the current zoning definitions and we keep trying to have that inform us on what the comp plan is going to be. It's backwards. The comp plan needs to inform the zoning. So I don't want to assume that the zoning is going to remain the same and that we're going to have the comp plan become subservient to those existing zoning criteria. And so that's a danger that we need to avoid that I'm hearing. So that, to me, is concerning for us to address. I acknowledge and agree that the current proposal with adding the uses is too restrictive. But I just want to be sure that we don't, we don't get backwards on ultimately how the use tables and the other details of the zoning descriptions get defined.
Well, I can comment on that. By referencing the applicable code section, you're, so the comp plan as a whole is when it's going to define the zoning. And it's the comp plan, the land use component, and the whole, the whole comp plan. It's not, it's not this matrix that's going to, that's going to dictate the zoning. It's going to be the entire comp plan. So, so I, you know, to then, to try to then shorthand it is going to cause problems. If you, if you reference a code section that this, this density is, the densities are set forth in this code section, well, the comp plan can dictate a change to that code section.
Yes.
And that's, that's fine. But then you've referenced the code section and people will go to the right place to look for what the density is. If you do it the other way around, the, the comp plan is not law. The comp plan is a, is a policy statement. So you, you look at the whole policy statement, okay, then, oh, maybe we should change the density for suburban, or for recreation, or whatever. But you still have to, you have to do that in the, in the zoning code. So by referencing the zoning code, that's the correct thing to do.
So maybe it's a quick reference of when you're looking at these, the answer could just be that you're giving a quick reference to the code that addresses that, not the definition in it, so that it helps guide people to the document that is enforceable versus trying to fit the explanation in. And that might meet the objective of what's being attempted by directing people to it, but also maintaining that we don't want to be in conflict, but we want to reference that which is the governing legal authority over the policy that is in the comprehensive plan. And so that would address, even if you wanted to go through your uses, saying, "This is where you find the code that impacts industrial use or commercial use or your density versus using the table to explain it to you."
But there has to be enough definition in the comp plan so that the code details are accurate to the intent of the comp plan or elsewhere. But again, we'll be backwards. We'll have the zoning driving the whole ship.
I think the key to this is, Don, again. In the, in the component language, there's one exercise that the state code requires. And that was just to look at the intrinsic suitability of the land for these certain land uses. And when we crafted that, it very much aligned with then the land use designations. Here's forestry. What is forestry? Growing trees. Here's, here's agriculture. What's that? Growing crops of some kind or animals, very generic. Here's housing, where people live, you know, so forth. At that level, not saying, "Well, in forestry, you can have deciduous forest, you can have this." No, forestry, agriculture, suburban, residential or rural. So trying to keep it at that level. So if you look at the section in there, I forget, but the section six, two or three, that talks about the intrinsic suitability of the land to accommodate the land uses. That's part of the key. So that's, that's the interesting part. All of this component is just a bunch of building steps. Here's this, 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 and it results to the land use designations and then putting them on the map.
And that makes sense, I agree. So let's use the suburban example as kind of a litmus test. So right now, I, I agree with Alan that the current zoning criteria is basically 10,000, 10,000 square feet to two and a half acres, right? Depending on services and all the criteria. But what is that derived from? In other words, if you look, if you look at the current comp plan, we have our, we have rural residential, which is five acres or 10 acre designations. And then we have suburban. Where does, why, why do we have nothing between five and two and a half acres? Why, why was that left out? Based on what decision-making criteria? And is, does, you know, so if I don't understand the logic behind why we have that gap, but somebody made that decision in the zoning criteria, and so is there, was that a good decision? Was that a mistake? Was, and so that's why I'm very intentionally proposing that the idea of suburban is it's less than five acre, right? But it's greater than an urban density, because we're, we're outside of the city limits. We're not trying to replicate the urban environment within the incorporated city. But we're somewhere between the city and the five acre minimum. And so to me, that's, that is the high-level logic to say that this is the next category or, you know, that you would, we would consider. So I don't want to enslave us to what the zoning currently defines, because to me, it doesn't clearly make sense why it's built that way right now.
Matt Lindsky here. You know, some of the issues that I have seen in the past is the, the old table, that matrix. And it'll say, you know, things for, I can't remember if it's suburban, I'd have to look at it for sure, where it says, you know, acreage is zero to two and a half. And someone says, "Well, that zone suburban is five acres." It cannot be zone suburban. Yes, it can be. So you can have, I know some parcels out there that are quite large areas on suburban. That doesn't mean that suburban only should be designated on land that's two and a half acres or smaller.
Right, not the designation, but the ability to develop it at that, at that level of density.
Sure.
Right, so.
Right.
But again, it's just, to me, it's a fundamental question of, why was our zoning code? There's nothing I can find in the current comp plan that says that there can't be a suburban parcel that's developed at less than five acres but greater than two and a half acres. And yet, that's how the zoning was created.
Are we shifting from, because first we're talking about the table itself and how we want the table implemented?
It's the application question.
No, I understand the content of it. And I think what Alan is, Alan made a comment that pointing towards the zoning code. And your comment was, you don't want to be enslaved by the zoning code. If we go into the specifics of each one versus kind of, what are the guardrails on it? And I, and I'm trying to pay attention to, when you guys are talking, you guys might not be seeing when someone's raising their hand before we go into it. And Alan had his hand up, but I think it was when we were, a couple of steps before, when we're talking about the question of, do you point to the zoning code or not the zoning code? And then Dave had his hand up and then he put his hand down. So I want to make sure I make it not just us, but they're raising their hands at certain times and then it looks like we are changing. So let me go to Alan, then to Dave, then back to Commissioner Donkey. Alan?
Well, the, the question is, I think, from Commissioner Donkey was, you know, two and a half, and then it goes to five. Well, the two and a half, I mean, so the comp plan, the basic design of the comp plan is to say, "Look, what are the important criteria for development? You know, is, is there adequate land for a septic, if it's a septic area?" Our understanding and input from Panhandle Health is that really to have an effective septic system and enough land area to, to deal with it, two and a half acres is, is kind of the best we can do. So that's why the upper limit in suburban is two and a half. Now, beyond that, obviously, there could be land in suburban that's more than that. But then, when you get into the, to the smaller acreages, then that depends on, and the comp plan addresses this, I mean, I hopefully, I mean, we thought it did, that you don't get smaller than two and a half acres unless you have some ability to have water and septic. And maybe other services too. I mean, I haven't memorized everything, but that's, that's really the criteria is, is, can you go smaller? Can you go to one acre? Well, maybe, but it depends on whether you have services or not. Maybe you need sewer, maybe you need urban sewer at that point in time, which I think you probably should. So that's, that's where the comp plan is trying to, we're trying to look at what services are required for this size lot, for this parcel. And two and a half acres is, that's with no urban water or sewer. So that's, that's the two and a half acres. And, you know, when you get, when you get to the, to the rural residential, that's a five acre, that's a different criteria. Obviously, there's five, a five acre lot will probably have some ability to have a septic system. But five acres, then the, the criteria is okay, that's, that's fine. Then the criteria goes to, now we want a rural setting. What's a rural setting? It's more of an agricultural pastoral type setting. That's five acres maybe as a minimum. And then, of course, you get to the ag forest, which is higher than that. So that's the way the comp plan is developed, in my opinion. I mean, that's what I thought we were doing. And, and so that's, that's the reason for it. It's not so much that, you know, we looked at the zoning code and we said, "Okay, well, that's, you know, we better follow the zoning code." You know, there was, there was some thought behind using the zoning code, for instance, on suburban.
So I agree with everything you said, Alan. What I'm trying to understand is, like I said, as a, an example, is there, like, so the two and a half acres is a, is a minimum lot size when you don't have an urban service because of that intensity and that lack of space, as you were talking about? So my fundamental question is, as a county, why was it decided that there was no consideration for less than five acres but greater than two and a half acres? It's just, it's just, it's, and it's not that it would need to be its own zone, right? But if you go back to a use table and you think about suburban, we just, we've created this, this blank space, if you would, within lot sizes between two and a half and five. And all I'm saying is, is there logic behind it? Does it make sense to not have anything defined there? Or should there be? And the reason I'm bringing that up is it goes back to, that was the reason I put the language in the suburban table under characteristics to simply say that we have anything that's, depending again, on, on the services, as you guys had written, that's going to be less than an urban density but greater than one dwelling per five acres. That's the, the span of what we have for the higher density level of residential development based on what the comp plan says. And I'm just trying to capture that and understand why we're saying we want to drive to the two and a half acre.
Matt Lindsky here again. I, I think the hangup perhaps might be is that people believe that two and a half is the maximum you can have in suburban. You can have any amount. You can have a 10 acre piece in suburban. So I don't think we should be, and that was the problem with that old tables. It said, you know, I think it actually said zero to 2.5 acres. So people got hung up and says, "Well, you can't have suburban because it's five acre piece." Yes, you can. We shouldn't be setting a minimum.
Right, those are minimums, lot sizes.
Right, just the, just the minimum, not, not, not the maximum.
Understood. But do you see the logic break down? To say that, I, I just, I'm disagreeing with the comment that what's being proposed for suburban is wrong because of what's currently in the zoning code of being 10,000 square feet to two and a half acres.
So can I?
I just don't see where there's an argument being made to explain why it's incorrect.
I have a question for clarification, and I do want to go to Dave's hand. When you're looking at the smaller than, there's, in the comp plan, it talks about different things that lets you go at different rates, sometimes based on services. So I've always looked at it as... So I've always looked at it as that, that there, it's, it is actually getting captured based on a bit more specific to the individual lot itself, not just a blanket. But you're going smaller and smaller based on what services are available, which can be inclusive of an individual well or a community well or something different that allows you to continue to break down. And so, that's kind of where I thought what you're talking about fit. It wasn't that it needed to say it exactly, but that it was more of, what does the property look like? That's coming into question in terms of that, that particular size. But I want to go to Dave and then back to Alan. Dave?
Good afternoon, Dave Bowman. So I'm, I'm listening to this exchange go all around and, and nobody here is wrong from what I can hear. But I would like to address Commissioner Donkey's question because I've looked at this a lot too and I, from the same angle, and I get it. But I think that if you consider that they are minimum lot sizes, then if you fill that gap between two and a half and five and, and put a different number in there, like three or between three and five, well, now your, now your minimum is no longer two and a half, it's something bigger. So if somebody has two and a half acres that they want to, that's, you know, it's saying, it seems like to me that would complicate it by, you would end up unintended consequences of saying two and a half can't be in that land use description. But bigger can't, at least that's the way I see it from my perspective. But tied to this, and I know that my view here is not popular with probably anybody in this room, but I, I maintain it has some value. And that is, when you look at the zoning code driving the comp plan, which is a valid concern, but there's a, there's a, I've maintained this before, I know people disagree with me, but the, the, the purpose statements in the zoning code that lay out these geographical and geological requirements of a particular zone, they don't belong there. You, you can, all, you, you have in the comp plan in your matrix, which I happen to be a big fan of the matrix. And I know that's not popular with everybody there either, but I am. It has, it serves a purpose. But you have your minimum lot size, you have your geographical characteristics, your infrastructure requirements and all those kinds of things that, that are going to drive the zone. Just the, and, and the purpose statements should not be those kinds of features, but they should be minimum lot size, the infrastructure or whatever that's required for that particular zone, and the uses that are allowed or not allowed in there in, in minimum lot sizes. And you can get rid of all that other stuff that, that, and I think should get rid of, that has led to so much, so many problems with zone changes and whatnot. And they, and they're redundant and they don't serve a purpose for being there if they're addressed in the comp plan, which in fact, they pretty well are. Thank you.
Alan?
So looking at the language, excuse me. So you say residential density is greater than one single family dwelling per five acres, but less than urban densities. I'm not, I'm not, what is, what am I supposed to gather from that? I, I don't, I'm not sure. So, obviously, there's going to be residential density is greater than one single family dwelling per five acres. Well, yeah, they could go down to one dwelling unit per 10,000 square feet. So I'm not sure how, how, how that really informs anybody of what the suburban residential land use designation is, but less than urban densities. Well, some might consider 10,000 square feet as an urban density. So I, I'm not sure what, what is trying to be conveyed by that. And my point is, you know, Brian, not, not to be critical. My point is that this just doesn't belong in this specificity in the comp plan. It just doesn't belong there. You can say that, you know, whatever, whatever criteria you want or, or whatever, but that kind of, that kind of specifics is going to raise nothing but questions. So anyway, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Frank Kibon?
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to point out that at least the way I read that language that Alan was just reading, that would impose a maximum density on any area that was zoned suburban. We'll have that land, of course, without land use designations at this point. It couldn't, you couldn't have a parcel that was larger than five acres that would be zoned suburban. Now, I don't know, maybe that was intended on Professor Dalton's part when he wrote that. But that's not the way, I don't think most of us, when we were working on the comp plan, were interpreting those densities. As we've said several times here in the last 10 or 15 minutes, those numbers are minimums and there is no maximum as far as lot size goes for any one of those categories.
Yeah, listening to you guys talk through it, I, I, I'm seeing your point that from the perspective of a minimum, not bookending the top of the scale makes sense. I see, I see what you're saying there. And I had to, I had to think through it some more. And Alan, I appreciate what you said. I'm not, I'm not taking it personally. I just, I, I have to be able to follow the logic path to buy into something. And that's the reason I was asking the question a few times because I wasn't, I wasn't following the logic path before. So, and that's, so comparing that to like the rural residential in the ag forest, that's where that makes sense because those are minimum statements only, not, there's no maximum, there's no top end. Is that, would you agree that that's the intent that you're describing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I see the sense in that.
On your services required box, what if on the box it said, which include but are not limited to, only because I don't know? Is it an exhaustive list of that's the only thing that we have to consider?
Interesting question. It's actually, has a little more in it than what was in the original paragraphs at times. I added some additional information such as referencing Fire District and Bonner County Sheriff's Office and Bonner County Highway Department for some of those items. But that's a question that I think we should, we should answer. But the, what's here now is, other than adding some of those agencies, is essentially what's in the paragraph descriptions.
The reason I asked that one is, on some services, if there's a problem that comes up, there's a potential for someone to need something else to be signed off on in the disclaimer of, how did I say it? But not limited to, only because I don't know what another one of those services could potentially say you need. Like if you went to DEQ and you were required and DEQ said, well, you need to do this. I don't know all of how the others work and so the giving out.
Yeah, no, I see your point. I think by saying which include, so you, when you say include, you're not saying anything is excluded. You're just saying these are the things you're specifically including.
Yeah, but not limited to, to allow for, it's allowing for someone to say, well, you also need this and.
It would be broader.
Yeah. Because I know there's some restructuring on some things, especially where DEQ is concerned, where they're wanting to address a little bit more teeth on water than they have. So that, that was one comment I had on not boxing it.
Are we, are we, Matt Linska here, are we still discussing the, the whole matrix thing? Because that's, like you mentioned earlier, we're kind of, before we actually get into each one of these designations, have we kind of come to a conclusion on that?
So I, I haven't. I, I'm a matrix person and I like bullet points, everything. It's all laid out in front of you. The only thing I see in this situation is that descriptions are so small and easy to read the way it is, I'm not sure if we really need the matrix, in my opinion. I have a page and a half of text and I have four pages of matrix. So we're actually making it bigger instead of shrinking it, which I think all government documents should be shrunk down to basics. So that is a concern that I have, is that it seems easy enough to read the way it was done originally by the planning commission, that by changing to a matrix, I'm not sure if we're going in the right direction or not. Because there are some differences and there are some things that are not spelled out as well as they should be as they were in the original description. It's, it's a concern I have.
You know, Matt Linska here, you know what? I was messing around. I, I sent an email yesterday. I was still messing around with that part of the day-to-day. And perhaps we could maybe look at some different language such as specific standards for uses, setbacks, requirements will be addressed in the zoning ordinance. Something just simple, plain as that, so it, it, it shows that people look at the zoning ordinance. Because like you said, Brian, that things may change. And so, we, those minimums may change, they may not. But it's always going to go right to the zoning ordinance, what's going to dictate.
So what if we had a suggestion that we move to the text, hearing the issues and concern brought forward on the matrix noting that there's benefits with concerns on making sure that we are not negating ourselves when we're writing it. Because if we change anything in this text, then this document would change anyhow. And then we can say it's the open to consideration to put a matrix in. Because inasmuch as the pages have grown, my take on a table is it allows me to not read the text and go straight to my, for example, suburban residential. But I equally agree with a lot of what Alan said when he was going through those sections and the concern of saying, do we reference back to just the code itself? But I also, yes, the text in terms of the paragraphs are small, but you've got to read through it. And I, and I think ultimately, if I don't want to read the matrix in the text, you choose that. If I want to just go straight to that quick reference guy, kind of sorts, you could. So why, why not go to the text now, let's go line by line of this component and see what content we want and address our, our verbiage? Because either way, that, it's going to impact that matrix. What does the board think about that?
That's fine. I mean, we need to get through the language one way or another regardless. But as we do the language at some point, we still need to answer the questions that have been raised by the planning commission about the proposed addition of a new land use designation of industrial and the proposed change to the definition of mixed use. That can happen as we go through, if we want to go top to bottom of what the, with the document. I just want to mention the fact that those are questions that have been raised that still have to be answered.
Right, and if we go top to bottom of the document, we can hit them on our way. Alan?
Yeah, I was going to say, I, you know, obviously, the other big issue that's raised by this is the addition of another land use category, which is industrial. Which, you know, I don't have a problem with the concept of it. We just had trouble trying to figure out where it would go. You know, once we, if you're trying, if you're basically talking about, I think you are, kind of heavy industry, something that, you know, is very noisy, pollutant, you know, all that kind of stuff. You know, there's definitions of that out, out, out and about. I think I provided one in my comments. But we were, I'm not sure where it goes. And we, we kind of struggled with that and that's why we didn't, that's why we didn't include it. Because we certainly considered it. But the other question I think that you need to, 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 to deal with is the concept that I know Commissioner Donkey is, likes, which is this buffering concept? And by buffering, by use of land use designations and/or zoning districts. I don't, I have to say, I don't think that works because you're always going to have a land use designation that's going to be, you know, a residential versus a commercial or something like that. Unless you create a land use designation that is, is called buffer zone, you know, it's always going to be adjacent. The ba, the basically, the way that you handle a buffering situation is with setbacks and, you know, design criteria. But, but to use land use designations or zoning districts as buffering is, seems to me to be not workable. And if you look in the county right now, I'd say probably one of the, one of the industrial areas, just take the, the, the sawmill in La Cleve, that's a huge plant. There's residential all around it, all around it.
Lay it on me.
That's just, that's just the reality. So I, I, I would hesitate, and I would just sort of suggest.
Bless your heart.
Kind of caution.
Let me pause you first.
Now backing away.
Dave, Dave, we can hear you. That's your dog or your wife, but mute. Thank you.
Sorry about that. It was neither.
All right, Alan, sorry, go ahead.
Anyway, I, I would just suggest that perhaps you could deal with buffering in a different way than in a land use designation and even in the zoning districts. But that's, that's my thought about that.
Okay.
I think you have to make kind of a decision at the beginning when you're going through this as to whether or not you're going to create an industrial land use designation because that might have an effect on the other language.
I agree, and that's why I proposed it because I think it's a critical decision that needs to be made early. So I think we need both types of buffering. I think we should use land use designations to layer different types of uses so that we can be more thoughtful. I, I think it's functionally useful because the concept of light industrial, which is, to your point yesterday, already defined in the code, right, those are essentially, encoder products is a great example. Right, everything's happening indoors. The, the impacts beyond the walls of the facility are extremely minimal. And so, to me, that's where the light industrial and the commercial as a mixed use zone make a lot of sense because they don't conflict with one another. And the impacts that they have on producing, you know, vibrations, odor, noise, all these things are much less than a heavy industrial use. And so, if I find a place that would be the most appropriate for heavy industrial use and then I can put mixed use around that before I get into residential uses, I've effectively created layers that help with creating buffering in addition to what the zoning requirements would be for set packs and things of that nature. So I, I actually think the two-pronged approach is going to be more beneficial in the long run. Are there going to be very many industrial or in this case, heavy industrial type locations? No, not very many, but I could think of an example being off of Bodie Canyon Road in the Priest River area where that would probably be a perfect location to say, this is truly industrial. We have mixed use around it and then we get into the suburban residential uses. And we're going to have some of the examples like the La Cleve mill, that that's just an existing condition and that's why the language is the way I proposed it, where if it's already zoned industrial, it should remain that way. So I was thoughtful about that language and I looked at examples. And so I think we can actually make it work within our county, looking at the map.
So what then, let's propose then that we address whether or not to add another use before we go top to bottom of the plan then. Because it sounds like that's what, because I see Don shaking his head. Alan's giving that as a proposal and it sounds like.
Dave's hand just went up and down.
I know, he's, he's up and down. But it sounds like that's the direction that people want to go, is do we add a, add a use first? So I want to have not just discussion, but to come with some answers so we can get through some stuff. So Commissioner Donkey, do you want to do your proposal for adding the industrial use?
I think they just heard my, my logic behind it, so I'll, I'll.
I wasn't sure if it was just a comment.
I'll let people respond, but thank you.
So I'll start out, Don Davis. Even just hearing what you just said about industrial, you could almost picture it that heavy industry would be in the center, sort of, and other buffered areas around it that are less intense, but maybe the same type of stuff, industrial, light industrial or commercial. Why not just say, here it is, mixed use in the comp plan? And again, go to the zoning code. And in the use tables, the use table can say heavy industry and it shows where it is in mixed use. And then the criteria. It has to be surrounded by buffers or it has to be somehow.
That would be an acceptable way to do it if there was enough detail to be sure that the use tables are going, are going to create those appropriate buffers. I would agree, the only, as long as we didn't include residential in the mixed use. I would agree, as long as we didn't include residential in the mixed use definition.
And I think that is the sticking point for community members is that people that are in the residential area are not, are having an issue with the idea of it becomes essentially an industrial area versus residential. And that, I think that's, I think the definition of mixed use is creating the issue, like the cohabitation of the two is what's not desirable.
Matt Linska here. Yeah, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding where people think mixed use is going to actually be a zone and you're going to have an industrial, commercial and a high density residential all in the same parcel. And that's not accurate.
Not on the same parcel in the same area.
Well, they can, yeah, perhaps, different things, but.
When you look at areas of residential and the light industrial, it's the argument that when you're looking at kind of the public comments that are coming in about mixed use, it's when the house is next to the use, then you start to basically live next to the commercial activities. And then the residential person says, that's not what I bought into. It becomes a business. And then the attraction of who wants to live next to this item is, I mean, and I'll give the example in the Blanchard area, the question has come up of what is light commercial? And so we have a lot of logging in across the highway. There's a logging industry where it's right next to, it's in between two houses, two properties that are housing. And so we say light commercial and the two people that hear the logging truck go in and out, it creates noise and it's early in the morning and it's, some people are saying there's processing of wood at that location. And so they're feeling like they're coexisting in a commercial, even if it's not the correct terminology. So I'm recognizing, I'm repeating what's happening in the area. It feels like you're living in the commercial corridor at a residential lot and that we're putting those two next to each other. And how do you balance that saying that the coexistence of it? That's part of what people are, think are commenting when they're sending us the definition of mixed use. And the mixed use definition feels very big. It's basically a voyage of uses in an area.
Yeah. And pretty much all we've done is we took that present transition designation and we just named it mixed use because the transition, everybody kept saying, well, what are you transitioning to? You know, we don't have to call it mixed use if we call it, you know, pretty much anything. I gone ahead and today, I gone ahead and mapped in that email, I think I sent just one and it was of encoder. I went around the entire county and looked at all the industrials that I could find. Every single one of them, or not a single one of them, I should say, would meet this location criteria.
I don't think that's correct, Matt, because the first thing it talks about is it's existing zone industrial. Right? So as far as qualifying, located in areas where industrial zoning currently exists.
Right.
Or, so the point is if there's going to be a new zone for industrial, then it needs to meet better criteria than what historically has been allowed. The reason why I don't like the idea of regurgitating, which I understand is the case, the transition, the existing transition designation into the new title of mixed use, is it's created exactly that area around encoder, which I think is a mess from a land planning perspective. It's, we have so many different things blended together around that parcel. Because it's light industrial, it's not problematic, but the way the transition designation allows this to play out, I think, is problematic. And if that had ended up being something other than encoder, it could have created some real problems for that neighborhood. And that's what I don't want to allow to happen in the future. So that's my opinion when I look at how that, how the zoning has played out within that transition designation around that parcel.
And the rest of that sentence, maybe you can explain it better to me. Or a major arterial road that can be located as a buffer between industrial designation and any other land use designations that allow residential uses. Well, it kind of conflicts there because it references, you know, the mixed use interstate highways. But our mixed use is commercial and commercial does allow residential uses. And so it kind of conflicts with itself.
Well, commercial as it's defined right now in the code allows, so again, this is where we're going cart before horse.
Sure.
If the intent is that we don't have residential in that area, then we need the code to reflect that. So that's where we, I think we keep getting flipped around in our logic with if the code's defining the comp plan or if the comp plan is defining the code.
So I'm going to pause for one second. Do you need something printed for you, Don?
No, I just, we're.
Okay. So then I got to go.
Oh, the map?
Yeah, we don't have our stuff in front of us.
I've got to go. Frank Inbock, can you get him the map or would he's, or a computer or something?
I can present something, but it takes up the majority of that screen.
Okay, I can see on Zoom to slide through. So let's go Frank Inbock, Bowman, Plant.
Well, I don't know. Well, I think first of all, a lot of the concern about the mixed use designation, and this has essentially already been said, but people aren't acknowledging or recognizing that ultimately, these different uses, residential, commercial, industrial, would happen in different zones. It's not as though those uses will be intermingled on a parcel by parcel basis. And one of the points I would make is if you separate out industrial, I still don't think you solve the problem. Because ultimately, you always have places where two different zones abut each other that have very different uses. You know, you have commercial against industrial or against residential or even industrial against residential potentially. So I don't think it really solves the problem fundamentally to take industrial out of mixed use and put it in a land use designation of its own. And it creates, in my mind, together with this buffering concept, I think the idea of layering land use designations to create buffers would be fantastic if we were starting with a blank map. And if we had nobody lived here and there were no businesses and we're going to draw what we wanted for Bonner Company for the next hundred years, yeah, that's probably the way you would draw it. But that's not the reality of what we have. And my concern is that by making that a requirement, in some instances, we create undue barriers to economic development in the county. And I know there's a lot of focus on controlling growth and keeping the rural character and believe me, I'm all for that. But we can't forget that one of the other purposes of this planning exercise is to ensure that we're facilitating economic growth that's necessary to sustain the county. And I'm concerned that you just won't find areas, if you have new industry industrial uses will want to come in, you just won't find areas that have that kind of buffering to allow them to come into the county. So that's, I expressed this in my email, that's one of my most significant concerns about this whole buffering idea and separating out industrial is we just won't find places for new industrial uses and.
Thank you. Bowman?
So Commissioner Frank Inbock is not wrong that the buffering could create, could inhibit industrial growth here. But I, in looking at Commissioner Donkey's table, I happened to like it. And I was, months ago, I was a fan of pulling industrial out of mixed use for all the reasons we've already heard. And then I got convinced by the commissioners that, well, we don't know where we would put it. And so I changed my mind and went back with them as, well, it's like the only place you can put it is mixed use. But then, in between then and now, I also stated in one of these workshops that you don't have to know where you're going to put it, right? So if you say, as the table says now, that you're going, that next to existing industrial would be appropriate, which I agree with. And then from there, if someone wants to create an industrial use somewhere, well, then they can come and apply to create a parcel or parcels, a property into that. And if it meets the criteria, well, then that's where you put it on the map. And I think that that's appropriate. I do think that I would have added to the buffer because that's one of those sticky words that, well, how do we define it? Where, in my opinion, you define it in the context. So I would say something like, where mixed use interstate highway or major arterial service as a buffer that will adequately mitigate impacts to other land use designations where residential use is allowed. So you've clarified it right there and you don't need to argue later on what buffer means. And a buffer here might mean something different than it means somewhere else and it'd be pretty easy to put that in. Anyway, I like it having separated out and there just has to be a balance somewhere between buffering and potential use down the road. And that's not an easy one to do because we need, you know, if we're going to have growth, we need to employ people. And I understand that. And this, I don't know how to fix that. Government can't fix it. Thanks. That's all I got.
John, a plant. Transitional back in the day, at least in 2015 and 18, was less than or equal to two and a half acres. So all the other zones are, it's the minimum. But in that, and you can look at it right now when you go to GIS, it's less than or equal to, and that's transitional. And it really truly was considered transitional zones. And if you just switch the name to mixed use, that would be fine, except now we've added 200 acres here and a couple hundred acres there. And all I'm saying is the impact is a lot less when they're really considered transitional zones when they switch to mixed use. So again, if we just want to keep all the transitional zones, but again, we've added a lot of property that's not that.
When you say that the minimum was two and a half acres, is it, are you saying that that's what the code required or that was the size that existed?
All I know is when I came in to speak with Milton, he showed it, it's on GIS. You can see it right now. If you pull up our zoning in GIS, it says less than or equal to two and a half acres. He explained it to me that it's truly a transitional area because in 2015, there was a transitional zone at the Linscott's that attempted to have be changed zoning. And I just know it was based on that and it was discussed in 2018. And I still see it as it is today. When you pull up GIS and the zoning, it says less than or equal to two and a half acres, which again, limits the impacts to any neighbors with a transitional zone. Thanks.
Alan? Sorry, he was.
I think we just, we just got a very good illustration of the confusion between zoning and land use designations. Transition is a land use designation. It's not a zoning district. The zoning districts under transition were suburban, commercial, industrial, rural service center and recreation. So there was no transition zone. So I'm not sure what's being conveyed there. But the mixed use, you could have any of those zoning districts within the land use designation mixed use. And that's where I think a lot of this confusion is. I think that, you know, the Linscott gravel pit gets a lot of attention, but the, whether it's transition or mixed use or something else, the zoning is going to be what's critical for that parcel. It's not automatically going to be, if it's mixed use designation is, remains, it's not automatically going to be industrial. It could be commercial, it could be rural service center, it could be recreation, it could be any of those things. Most likely it would be commercial, in which case, you know, the batch plant, which is apparently everybody's trigger, is not permitted in a commercial zone. So it depends on what the zoning is, not what the land use designation is. But there is no transition zone.
Matt?
Yeah, Matt Linska here. Yeah, what, I know.
Can I pause you one second?
Sure.
Alan, did you have something else to say? Did I say Matt too soon? I thought you were done, but then I heard a squeak.
No, I was done.
Okay. All right, Matt.
And that old matrix, that's where this information is coming from, you know, less than up to two and a half acres. We shouldn't be having maximums placed in here, only the minimums. And I think that made a lot of confusion. That's what we were discussing earlier, is that matrix. Because it, you weren't, it doesn't state that in the language, it's only in the matrix.
I would agree with that. I don't understand the point of listing maximums. We could have a 40 acre parcel zoned or 10. You know, it's like, so I don't understand that concept. Minimums, yes. Maximums, we should not even be discussing it. One thing I do want to say though, on the mixed use, I do think that your high density housing should be allowed in that. And encoder, I'm going to bring that up again. That's, I think that'd be a great place to have residential, high density residential around the encoder. I don't see how that would affect those residences one bit. There's no noise being emitted or anything else.
That's actually what's been proposed.
Okay, because I don't see it in your matrix, I guess. And I need to get back to this.
No, it's not. You're right. I'm sorry, not the residential in the mixed use, but the fact that it could be adjacent to the residential is what's proposed right now in that mixed use table. So it would be, that's the, so that would be a conversation as to whether or not high density residential would also be included in that mixed use. But I was really, as I am, opposed to having industrial, which could include having industrial and residential in the same designation. Because I'm just concerned that that means then we're going to end up putting those right next to each other potentially with the zoning districts. And that's what I don't want to see happen.
So I've heard the planning commission's issue with the industrial, so because the question we're on right now is do we add industrial as a standalone? And so the planning commission's position was not, no, it was just, well, where would you put it? And I think that part of what Commissioner Donkey and what Dave Bowman have said, there's some validity to the statement of to have the area identified of what the characteristics and locations are and then allowing people to apply for where that is with that qualifying statement of where it already is in existence could address that issue. I equally agree with the comment from Commissioner Frank Inbock about how potentially a buffer can limit the growth that we equally are obligated to ensure the growth of the county in terms of industrial. But I, I'm not convinced that it's not the right thing to add it as its own section because I think it helps provide identification that there is an area of industrial, what, and more specifically for me, what are we calling industrial in Bonner County? What does that look like? What does it mean? And then saying, we have to find a place to put it because part of what we're doing when we put it in mixed use is I think we're creating a little bit more of that, even if it's just the community tension at the planning of, is this going to be industrial, commercial next to residential? I think that that's a lot. And I think the industrial as a standalone and what it should be around provides some property, right, feeling of knowing I'm not going to be next to that because I didn't buy in that section. It's, you're kind of got to add a guess if you're in the, around mixed use, but identifying where it would, what it looks like and where it should go. I don't see the argument for not doing it just because we can't find a spot on the map to say, this is where you can grow. I think we're trying to do that now. And so what is the hard, what is the negative of identifying it and taking it as, as the files come forward and looking at the location characteristics to determine, is this reasonable to be industrial? What's the argument from the commission on that?
I don't know if I'm going to address that particular question. Kind of got sidetracked there just a little bit. But, you know, if we're going to go ahead and create a separate industrial designation, we need to map that. There is so much demand out there and so little inventory when you're talking about industrial land. And it's not just the small tracks. You know, when we gone ahead and met with, yeah, Honda Economic Development Group, like there's a big demand. There's a big demand also for some larger track parcels as well. But to go ahead and create a land use designation and not identify it, I think is a big mistake. You know, how would that, how would that look? So then, in order to go ahead and have an industrial, you're automatically going to have to be comp planned mixed use. Is that what you're thinking? And then if you reach the criteria for industrial, then you can ask for that. So how does that going to play out? If you think about the process on that. And I do believe if you're going to create that extra designation, we need to map it.
And if we do map it, my concern is. And if we do map it, my concern is, you're limiting that land strictly to industrial. Is that correct?
No.
No.
Looking at either the matrix or the language, and it says, the appropriate zones in this designation are, da, 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 da. So if there's going to be an overriding designated area, and industrial is okay within that designated area, then that takes away, to have an industrial designation and only industrial zone, that kind of goes against comp plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess that's what my brain was thinking.
Which is, again, why it was embedded in the mixed use or previously in the transition.
But in part, it was embedded because you guys couldn't identify where you would call industrial.
Well, not, thinking back quite a bit, of course, we started with the 2005 comp plan. And a lot of things carry over from that. And this is one, the transition designation was there with very much the same criteria and the same zoning possibilities. So we didn't go far from that. About 10 years ago, and some of you may remember this, the board and then the planning department looked into actually designating more areas industrial, meaning mainly the gravel pits, and putting industrial designation or zone on those. And that went nowhere. So it was, again, where do we put it? Do we, do we put it in certain areas? If you define the criteria that an industrial area should have A, B, C, D, E, somebody comes in and they say, well, this area, it has potential for that, it doesn't have this, and so forth, and it gets weighed against the criteria, and then you say, yes, it is.
Was it? And I see Frankenbach, I have a question for you guys, and it's, there's just so many years of planning. There was a time when down, when you're coming from Spirit Lake into Blanchard, when you come down that slope there, that left side, it was like a back and forth of, that would be the perfect spot for us to zone as industrial, because of what it is, where it is, and what it's not by. And if I remember, I don't know that we actually ever did it, but it is still exactly the same place.
And it still has a lot of the same uses.
And so, is that not an example of where you would say, this is a perfect industrial spot in Bonner County to allow for that growth? And I'm saying that because part of what Matt's saying is, we need to map it. That section, I know that there's some people that live, when you go up farther behind that, they don't like, they didn't like that idea of that spot being industrial, because you would come out from them, but you, and if you're doing the give and take, you were coming from behind the mountain area and going through the area, so it wasn't adjacent to the housing, because it's a, do you know where I'm talking about?
Yeah, in fact, I think, I think the Southwest Bonner County comp plan map shows that.
It did show.
And that was, that was one of the, when we were, because we were tasked with, where would you put industrial in Blanchard area? And that was a point of, basically, the people that didn't want it were the people that were back there, but that seemed reasonable, given what was in that area. So if you needed to map someplace of industrial, you could map. I mean, because I believe every, I thought every subarea plan was tasked with identifying industrial specifically in their subarea plans. I don't know that everybody did that.
That was up to the subarea, yeah.
I know, I know, I know everyone didn't do it, I just know that that was a discussion in that particular plan, which does still exist today as an option to say,
Sure.
this is an industrial spot. Because we were talking about mapping, so...
Yeah, that goes back to Bodie Canyon, too, because that's what the Priest River Old Town, so they're a good, they identified.
Knowing that, the people that I talked to are not going to like that I pointed that out, but I do believe that was a spot that we identified. Let me go to Frankenbach and then back to you, because he's had his hand up.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear in my comments before. It's not so much, in my mind, anyway, it's not so much the creation of a separate industrial land use designation that I'm concerned creates too significant of a barrier to new industrial uses. It's the concept of buffering with layers of different land use designations around the industrial use. So I imagine a scenario where, at some point in time, somebody might make the decision that, that dedicating, you know, 10 acres to storage units on Highway 95 is not the highest economic use of that property. And they're going to buy the guy out, and they're going to want to put in some industrial use that could employ people. But they're going to run into the barrier of saying, ah, we don't have those layers of, the appropriate layers of land uses around that parcel, so therefore, it can't be zoned as an industrial use. So that's, that's the concern I have, it's mostly about that buffering, which I think, I'm fine with the concept of buffering, but I think it should be done through design standards, rather than through layering of other land uses around the parcel invested.
Are we building buffering in and just not calling it buffering? When we look at our map and we say, what are the sizes and the types of lots around this particular request? And we're kind of making the decision based on what it looks like? We really are buffering, we're just not calling it buffering. And, I mean, unless, you can, because that's part of what people bring forward, is when they want to go from their 10 to their 5, or they want a different, they want their different uses, it's, we're looking at what's in that area, which is really still what mixed use is doing, too. We're looking at, where is that particular parcel? How close are you to residential? How close are you to what mixed use is defined as? And we're making a determination of what you're requesting and whether or not it fits. So I, it feels like we are actually buffering, we're just not saying that we're buffering. And this would, what I think Commissioner Donkey is proposing is that you officially address the need to essentially insulate property owners from the adverse effect of a different use that could negatively impact their property, is essentially what we're trying to do. Which is equal, in a way, it goes both ways, because the commercial person doesn't want to negatively impact their residential neighbor, because there can be negative outpour of that. And I, I mean, because when you use the example of Lynn Scott, it goes both directions. Lynn Scott doesn't want their name brought up over hearing issues related to gravel pit in a negative way. The people are saying, we have a specific issue related to the use. I think the proximity of what we're doing, I think, the idea of creating the buffer is trying to resolve this from ever happening again in the county. I think that's part of what I see it as. That doesn't make it an easy solution to implement, though. But I see the intent behind it. Eric? That's his first hand up, so we're going to go to Eric.
Yeah, so I'm not quite sure, getting back to the question I thought we were trying to address right now and resolve, I'm not sure I heard an answer to Commissioner Corn's question, was the downside of potentially creating a new land use designation called industrial, in fact, might limit certain areas that we paint that land use designation on as industrial only, and therefore, it can't be used for anything else. Whereas, the way we do it today, including it mixed use, gives us options, one of which is industrial. But primarily, I'm just waiting for an answer to Commissioner Corn's question.
I thought Don answered that. I, sorry.
My bad then, Don, if I missed it, I apologize to you, sir.
Redo, I guess, you got a redo.
All right. Well, I, I think that was the answer that I gave, was, that was not the intent to have almost, I think actually, all of the designated areas, all the land use designations are broad enough to have variation within them. And certainly, that's what the transition does now. That's what the mixed use would do, is say, within this, here's the uses and the zones that can occur in this designation, under this designation, but it doesn't come down to one. And that was part of the, the whole thing 10 years or so ago, when the whole discussion of industrial came up, because we were talking about industrial designation then, and industrial zone, and pinning it down. And that, that really, it just, I think for all the right reasons, it didn't go anywhere.
But by adding another designation such as industrial, taking it out of the mixed use and making it its own, and where would we put those? Because according to Commissioner Donkey, it would include gravel and sand, pits, saw mills. Well, I think most of us understand that you and I aren't actually capable of looking at this county and saying, here's a great place for a gravel pit. Okay? Gravel pits are there because that's where the rock is, right? So we can't just pick a spot on a map saying, this would be a great place for the industrial land use, even though there's no rock there to make gravel, or it makes absolutely no sense to have a log yard there. So are we being counterproductive in that essence?
Well, that was, I think that was my answer, that no, it doesn't, it doesn't help anything to do that. It limits it too much, so keep it within the mixed use designation, if that's what it's to be called. Keep it within that. Describe criteria to get there, to actually have that land use on the ground, and proceed, so.
Dave?
One more time.
Yes, sir, I just didn't want my hand after my last comment.
Okay.
So, trying to digest everything that's been said, I do agree that it would be more limiting, if we had a separate industrial designation. I agree with Dave Frankenbach's comment, and I think some others, that ultimately, you can, you can create design standards. You can use just design standards, you can use a combination of land use designation and design standards. I would be agreeable to having the broader mixed use designation if we added enough definition to make it clear that there are going to be categories such as heavy industrial, light industrial, and enough buffering design requirement designation that it's going to have the same effect, I think, actually, in a lot of ways, as what would happen with land use designations. But ultimately, a lot of parcel sizes just aren't going to qualify for certain types of uses, because appropriate buffering means there won't be enough space. And that's what we have to do to protect adjacent parcels. But I think we could accomplish that through a mixed use, a broader mixed use designation. But I think it has to have more definition to it than what we have right now.
So before we go farther with our, all of 10 minutes left of this meeting, are we then saying that you'll, you want to remove the idea of adding another designation and address the definition of mixed use as presented, and then we can go top to bottom of the text?
Yeah, from everything I'm hearing, I think our best path forward would be to eliminate the proposal I had of the new industrial zone, but to spend, spend the time needed to redefine the mixed use, to be sure that we are not going to end up with a scenario where we're putting zone districts of having industrial right next to residential, because we don't have clear enough definition of appropriate design standard, buffering setbacks and things of that nature.
So make a quick comment of that. It sounds then, the language above, where it talks about mixed use, adding in there some of that description or discussion. And then that would lead to, then, if that's there in that saying, but buffers are necessary, some, some criteria is necessary, so forth, in the policies then, on the land use component or the implementation component, where land use is talked about, a policy that says, industrial uses shall have adequate buffers or some such thing.
Right. It's just, right, with greater, with greater clarity of different types of
Exactly, so again,
uses and impacts.
Looking at what the state code, the change was, that it's not in conflict with the, with the comprehensive plan policies, that's where it needs to be, is in the policy.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So fortunately, unfortunately, we just finished approving the...
Yeah, but we knew this was going to happen.
Oh, yeah, it'll happen, it'll happen.
We can't change that for, what, six more years?
No. No. But anyway, that's, I think that's the trail, a little bit more, but broader definition in the designation language, which would then go right into a policy statement that said some of those things in policy form, which then can be very easily translated into the zoning code.
Yeah, because I just want to be sure that we don't miss the target on how the zoning code needs to be redefined, based on what language we have in the comp plan for this issue. Because to me, right now, there's too little definition to ensure that we don't have a problem in the future.
Which then means we have to make sure that we reevaluate and make sure the islands that were created from moving from transition into mixed use to begin with, that we don't create a problem when we add the additional language on the industrial, because that was one of the things that you guys did identify, that switching from one to other did create, and you gave a solution for what that meant. But as we move to the next one, sorry, it's coming up on the next hour of...
You're almost there.
Yeah. But that, so that we don't, so that we can say that we addressed that, and that the addition of additional policies related to industrial doesn't cause a problem with the fix that was given for the islands that were created from transition to mixed. I don't know, you guys did that work, you just mentioned that there were islands that were created, and...
I don't know.
It would have been, if, if we'd have gone, at one point, there were islands, but then we took it out.
Okay. See, I wasn't sure where those would be.
Some of them were going to be some of these.
You guys, what did you do to fix it? Because you fixed it with the switch. I just want to, if we're going, so it says, the designation was changed to mixed use to more adequately describe the purpose of the designation. However, when certain commercial and or industrial uses were given, the mixed use designations, islands were created in rural, residential, and agricultural forest areas? That's what I'm just saying, make sure we go back and evaluate to make sure that adding this...
I think we changed it so on the map, they don't show on the map. Mainly with some of the pits in the rural area.
Yeah, Lynn Scott here. Some of the, some of the mines that were not on the highway fringe, that were surrounded by Ag 10, Ag 20s, those were isolated. They didn't fit the descriptions, you know, that they had to have direct access on primary transportation routes, highways, major minor, because they didn't fit that description. So we took them out.
So when we go back to add in, industrial back in, with the new constraints that we're trying to address, those won't be impacted, then, okay?
Right. And I believe a lot of this can be addressed through setbacks and standards, you know, just because it's mixed use, you might have that small five acre piece, able to have the setbacks required, let's say, for an industrial use. So it could still be zoned commercial, but it's still be comp plant and mixed use.
I think that when you look at, if we're going, if you're going to put more reliance on the setbacks in that mixed use, I think that goes back to where the illustrations would probably be beneficial tools to utilize for the setbacks of the particular, when you're abutting something that's not what you want to touch, the image might be beneficial.
Right, and just thinking of that, in the zoning code that was put in place in 2008, under community design, there were a lot of examples drawn into that. And they weren't, that's the only section of the code that had the actual illustrations, but it's on that line.
Yeah.
Alan?
Oh, yeah, a couple things. With regard to those islands that were created, we left those land use designations as the predominant area that surrounded it, from a land use designation standpoint, like Ag Forest, because we didn't believe that the zoning should be changed, because the zoning, you know, wouldn't allow it either. So basically, they're left as nonconforming, legal nonconforming. And that seemed to be the only, the best answer for, for those islands, as you call them. I'm curious as to, I think we have a workshop, I know we're running out of time here, we have a workshop next week, I'm just wondering if you could tell us what, what you plan to do on that, at that workshop? If you plan on revising this language, or, you know, what are we going to do?
So I would like to go top to bottom of the text, from the very beginning of the next meeting. And then I think that it's reasonable to, I think that essentially, the text of the industrial is already there, it's just putting it in the mixed use section. So I feel like we should be able to hit the ground running, top to bottom on land use. Is there a difference of opinion on that? Because I think, and then, that's where we would start.
I'm good with starting at the top of the document, walking through, and then, I can't make a promise about any recommendations I might bring by the meeting next week, given all the workshop, given all the meetings we have between now and then next week, but I'll do what I can.
Commissioner Corn?
By top to bottom, do you mean the beginning of the land use component, or just the land use designations?
No, land use component.
The whole component.
The component. Yeah.
So what you're asking is, you want to start at the very beginning of this document?
Yeah. Yes.
Just to be clear?
Yes.
All right. So we're just gonna, we'll come back to this at the end?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And then.
Just because that'd be way too straightforward.
And if we decide to do away with industrial?
But the, don't, you don't mind, I want to cross out your words, because you print in white paper.
Write anything you want on that.
You need that still.
Oh.
He's going, he's going to use the words. He's going to use the words still.
Maybe.
Maybe not.
So then, uh, so for the setup of the workshop, what we'll do is we'll go section by section and be, because it's a workshop, and we did this before, we're going to go, we're going to have, staff's going to present, the board will give comments, the commissioners, the commission board will give comments, public comment, as we go through the sections, because it's too long for people to wait to have to say a whole bunch of stuff, um, as we're changing, because we're trying to change the document mid-section if a change is needed. That way, the community knows where their comment is going to go. So we'll do it that way. Okay?
Sure.
All right.
And I just want to say, I, I do value being able to brainstorm and, you know, go back and forth and challenge ideas, because that's how we come up with better ones. So it's just, again, you know, we, as a board, we're just walking through this process now. So we haven't had the benefit of having tried multiple iterations of ideas and found the pros and cons of them. So please understand.
It's our opportunity to speak with the planning commission too. It's not like we get that conversation with you guys before, so you guys have been super patient and, uh, helpful with helping us to understand how you guys came up with your recommendations for it.
Try the bulk of mine, Bill, but I don't know.
Well, and that's where I just, I don't want people, like, you know, I don't take it personally, but if I don't throw an idea on the table, then you, you don't know whether or not it's a good or a bad one until it's been tested. So, um, I just want people to understand that that's what I expect us to do, is test the ideas, it doesn't matter whose they are, and we have to be able to defend the idea in the end if we're going to keep it.
All right.